Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan is absent. Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker is absent. Ms. Young?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion approved the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Young?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Chase. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to special presentations. The year-end report from the CIP Advisory Committee. The floor is yours.
Right.
And this is being videotaped, correct, Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am.
It's live and it will be repeated whenever we show the meeting from tonight, correct? We will show these presentations. Okay. That's what we asked for.
Oh, well, no pressure then. One take, kind of a setting.
No, I just want you to know that this is...
There's no take one, take two. It's, you know, live.
We just keep rolling. All right. Well, before I start with the presentation, first I want to say these people are amazing. It's been a lot of dialogue and they were really awesome. And Amy wants to just slide there and click, but she did an enormous job putting all of this together. And so I want to say thank you to her before I get started. Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share the work of the CIP Advisory Committee. Our committee agreed that the ability to explain school construction needs in essence to tell the story is crucial if the school board wishes to engage in the support of Stafford citizens, Stafford educators, and the Stafford Board of Supervisors. Who benefits when we tell our story well? Students in the classroom is the obvious answer. But it goes further. Telling our story well helps us to provide a space for students to develop healthy peer relationships, the more individual attention in smaller classes, and opportunities for innovative educational activities, and increased family participation in education. So who benefits when we tell our story well? We all do. When telling a story, the words we choose are crucial. Some words help tell the story, others distract. The words on the screen are some of the words that get thrown around when we start talking about capital improvements. You can see that there are so many terms and so many definitions, we probably haven't been telling our story very well. First, we'd like to focus on a term that we think is the most important and most informative when talking about capital improvements: design capacity. Design capacity is where it all begins. Before the first shovel of dirt is moved for a new building, an architect creates the blueprints that meets student capacity requirements. Architectural designs are based on VDOE Design Guidelines, which are based on the Virginia Standards of Quality and on Educational Specifications, or EdSpecs. These were developed by a large group of educational experts and community stakeholders. All building systems are integrated into those plans and are scaled to fit the design capacity of the buildings. Bathrooms are counted, ventilation system size is measured, cafeteria size, and even the counter space in the kitchen are calculated. All the parts and systems that make a school building function well are designed based on design capacity of the building: the number of classrooms, the distance between bathrooms and classrooms, the number of exits and water fountains, the width of the hallways, the number of playgrounds and their locations, the size and assembly space, and the bus ramp length. All are designed to support the children and staff that will fill that building. One term that we recommend be dropped is program capacity. This term has a lot of baggage attached to it. It is vague, and worst of all, there's no real consensus among the decision-makers about what this term actually means. After a great deal of discussion, we recommend using a new term: building utilization. Building utilization represents the way a facility is being used. Even when schools are designed exactly alike, they are not utilized in exactly the same ways. Building utilization may change from year to year based on the needs of the student population in the school building. Some years, there may be more kindergarten classes than fifth-grade classes. Some years, there may need to be more self-contained special education classes. Other years, the school may qualify for class-size reduction grant money. Building utilization is not a substitute for design capacity. It is not intended to be used exclusively for long-range CIP planning. However, year-to-year comparison of building utilization statistics can provide valuable information about the trends and emerging facility needs. Building utilization and program capacity are very similar. They are calculated annually as a cooperative effort between the facility principal and the Stafford County Public Schools' operations staff. They both provide information about how the spaces within the facility are being used, and they both allocate space for small group and pull out educational spaces. Building utilization is unique, and in our opinion, superior to program capacity because it is based on the Virginia Department of Education Guidelines for school facilities. These guidelines are the standards that most school architects use when designing the new facility. Currently, program capacity is only calculated for elementary schools. We recommend that building utilization be reviewed for schools at all levels as a way to diagnose or predict future needs and adjustments. The foreword of the VDOE Guideline document says that the guidelines were developed in a cooperative effort between the Virginia Department of Education, school architects, and school division facility directors from across Virginia. The goal was to provide recommendations that will help local school divisions ensure that their school sites and facilities support the principles of good teaching and learning and promote sound educational programs. Included in these guidelines are specifications from VDOE. We would like to draw particular attention to the standard class size used throughout the document: 25 students. The 25-student classroom is so prevalent throughout this document that it governs the guidelines for every single system within the building. This 25-student class currently forms the basis for the design capacity calculations for each of our Stafford County schools. Class size has been an area of discussion for the school board and an item of concern for parents in the last year. We urge the school board to implement the best practices contained in the VDOE Guidelines and to accept the recommendation contained in the document to, quote, "exceed them whenever possible." We also urge you to abandon the practice... Excuse me. We urge you to abandon the practice of using staffing ratios and maximum class size to calculate classroom capacity. Maxims are not optimal and should be the exception, not the plan.
We began our evaluations by looking at our high schools. We reviewed capacities for each school and the projected enrollments provided by our own school staff. We have provided a companion written report, which contains more of our research and data. This graph shows the projected enrollment change in our high schools. It uses data from the most recent enrollment projection report that was dated November 30 of 2018. This graph shows that we should expect a surge in high school enrollment of about 4% next year, with two subsequent years of 3% growth. Please note that this is a graph of change, not a graph of enrollment. Although you may see a decline in the rate of change, there will not be a decline in overall enrollment. The dip in the rate of growth only moves to a 1% growth rate, not an overall decline in enrollment. This chart shows actual enrollment growth and the resulting design capacity percentage. We coined the term "desk cap." The desk cap percentages are the numbers that the Board of Supervisors actually use to determine when a new high school is needed. The current methodology is to begin land acquisition when the desk cap percentage hits 90%, and to open the new school when the desk cap percentage hits 100%. Based on the data in the most recent enrollment projections, planning for high school number six should begin in 2019, 2020, and the new high school should open in 2023, 2024. We did a trigger analysis, which means we considered when to open a new high school. We determined that if high school number six opens in the year that the division-wide high school enrollment hits 10,650 students, which is 100% of our current high school design capacity, the resulting division-wide desk cap percentage would be 83%. We agree with the Board of Supervisors that this is an appropriate planning strategy for high schools. Next, we move to middle schools. In this growth rate graph, we actually see a small decline in enrollment projections in 2021. Because the decline represents fewer than 50 students each year, it would probably be more appropriate to consider those years as stable, rather than declining. Again, this graph shows enrollment projections as compared to design capacity. You can see that we anticipate a large influx of students next year, followed by three years of stability. Then the projections align with the standard 1% growth per year. We did notice, however, that this year's actual enrollment has exceeded the projections by 3%. If this additional 3% is added to the projection, projected 6% desk cap growth next year, the resulting desk cap will be 92%, and the new school construction timeline should then be triggered. There is more data and analysis on this enrollment pattern on page eight of your written report. We should also note that this year's actual enrollment figures show that AG Wright Middle School, Drew Middle School, and Rodney Thompson Middle School have shown a disproportionate rate of enrollment, which has led to overcrowding in those three schools. Stafford Middle School is also showing signs of enrollment growth that may lead to overcrowding in its next few years. More information and data on this finding is on page seven of our written report. Our trigger analysis for middle schools yielded the similar results to the high school study. We again agree with the Board of Supervisors that the middle school number nine should open in the year that division-wide enrollment is projected to hit 100% of the current design capacity. Next, we looked at elementary schools. Again, we are using design capacity in our review. Enrollment projections for elementary students show steady growth at an average rate of 1% annually. There are no enrollment spikes or dips projected. This growth rate is consistent with the historic data. Note the change in design capacity in 2019, 2020, when the new Moncur Elementary School opens. The dip in desk cap percentages indicates an increase in design capacity, not a decrease in enrollment. Actual elementary school enrollment during the 2018-2019 school year grew by 2% between the September 30th consensus and the May 20th census. We recommend that the school board track enrollment throughout the school year in order to evaluate trends in the mid-year enrollment growth and to have advanced notice when future enrollment projections might come into question. The trigger analysis for elementary schools showed a significantly different result compared to the high schools and the middle schools. Opening a new elementary school does not reduce the desk cap percentage as significantly as opening a new high school and middle school does. When a new 950-student elementary school opens, there will only be a 5% to 6% drop in the division-wide desk cap percentage. For example, if we open an elementary school when we have reached 100% of current design capacity, we will actually only drop to 94% of design capacity. Therefore, if we follow the Board of Supervisors' current planning methodology, we will always exceed the optimal capacity of 90% that the comprehensive plan identifies. We recommend that the new trigger point for elementary schools be no more than 92% of our current design capacity. If the new elementary school opens when we have reached 92% of the current design capacity, we will drop to 86% of design capacity. The 92% trigger point acknowledges that our elementary schools require the most flexibility in utilization. It limits the number of years that schools must operate above the optimal capacity, and it recognizes that there's no perfect distribution of students, so some schools will be more crowded than others. Finally, we analyzed our head start in early childhood special education facilities and capacity. This area represents our most unpredictable group of students. Although we can control our head start and our VPI enrollments by maintaining waiting lists, we are mandated to provide services to our ECSE students. Some of the unpredictability of the ECSE program occurs because students become eligible for the program throughout the school year. While we can review historic growth trends and apply national ECSE trend data, specific projections for this population are pretty much impossible. Our 5% growth projection is based on national trends, past growth, and projected county population growth. The ECSE director anticipates adding two ECSE classrooms per year for the foreseeable future. The space requirement will be problematic in the near future as the North Star complex is anticipated to open at 100% capacity, and the Melchers complex only has two classrooms available for growth in the upcoming years. We have provided additional analysis of the pre-K capacity challenge on pages 12 through 14 of our report.
I'm sorry, I have to move this up. After doing our analysis, it was time to connect the dots. The Business Dictionary defines a silo mentality as a mindset present in some companies when certain departments or sectors do not wish to share information with others in the same company. This type of mentality will reduce the efficiency of the overall operation, reduce morale, and may contribute to the demise of a productive company culture. Unfortunately, this is a good description of the current relationship between the school board and the Board of Supervisors. The joint CIP process was a worthwhile effort to eliminate this mentality, but it fell apart because of mistakes by both groups. We urge you to reengage with the Board of Supervisors and begin a joint process again. We recommend one change: include community stakeholders, those who are most affected by the success of this joint process. We offer the following recommendations based on our review. In order to better understand how our educational buildings are being utilized, we recommend that you revise a currently-used tool. Each year, Stafford County Public School staff and school principals collaborate to accurately reflect how each school building is being utilized that school year. We recommend continuing this existing process with minor revisions to the calculation worksheet. We have included a sample worksheet on page 16 of our report. The VDOE guidelines recommend minimum square footage based on the grade or program needs. We recommend that the square footage be added to this utilization report so that square footage deficiencies or excesses can be identified. We recommend that general education spaces and special education spaces be segregated in the final utilization calculation. Special education spaces are not usable for general ed students, so it presents a skewed evaluation of available capacity. Finally, we recommend that these reports be presented to the school board as early as possible after the beginning of the school year and that the reports be provided on the school website. We also recommend that the school board implement a regularly-scheduled five-year facility review for all educational buildings in the Stafford County Public School inventory. We believe that a comprehensive review of a space, including a review of the ways it has been utilized, will provide key information about needed 3R projects, renovation requirements, or other changes. The utilization reviews will also prove useful when creating design specs for a new school or for identifying situations such as the pre-K drain on capacity. Much of this work is already being done by school staff, but the records are not easily accessible for the school board or for the public. We recommend that this report be posted on the school website. Although there's been a lot of tension between the school board and the Board of Supervisors recently, there are parts of the CIP planning process that work. We recommend that you adopt what works. First, the county comprehensive plan already identifies a 90% building utilization as optimal. The 90% level is indeed optimal because it allows flexibility for fluctuating program needs. It also allows space for mid-year enrollment growth, and it allows adjustments for uneven population growth without the need for a large-scale redistricting, which none of us enjoy. Sorry, I added that part. Embrace the Board of Supervisors' desire to use design capacity as an objective planning measure for CIP planning. This is a stable, predictive standard that makes long-term planning more straightforward. Using the building utilization report to inform your planning. Building utilization is an excellent diagnostic tool to discover what is actually happening in the buildings. Although it changes each year, you will be able to identify trends that need attention. Recently, county staff proposed a linear timeline requiring two years for land identification and acquisition, two years for the development of EdSpecs and building design, and three to four years for construction. Supervisor Shelton urged staff to consider a plan that allows planning elements to overlap or occur concurrently rather than consecutively. We agree with Supervisor Shelton and suggest an integrated planning process that allows the planning timelines to be shortened from seven to eight years to four to five years. A shorter planning timeline allows for more accurate projection data to be available and a more nimble and flexible response to unexpected enrollment growth. We have included research about the accuracy of multi-year projections beginning on page 30 of our written report. We also suggest you continue using the campus approach to school construction. Building two or more schools on one site allows for economies of scale, especially when more than one school is needed in quick succession. Shared campuses also can decrease the land acquisition timeline. As just discussed, a shorter planning timeline allows for more accurate planning. The committee recommends the following CIP timeline based on review and analysis. First, we recommend that the process of identifying and acquiring land in the Hartwood District for High School Six begin immediately. We also recommend that the parcel be large enough to accommodate an elementary school. In fiscal year 2021, or whenever it becomes practical, we suggest moving the Heather Enfield Public Day School to the old Moncur Elementary School. The Board of Supervisors has already indicated a desire to expand this program in order to keep private day school expenses down. They've also discussed the possibility that other jurisdictions might be interested in enrolling their students in this program. In that event, this program would produce revenue, which could help offset the expenses of running the program and future renovation expenses. We recommend that phased renovations be considered as the program grows. In fiscal year 2022, or after the Heather Enfield Day School leaves Drew Middle School, we recommend the renovations of Drew Middle School, including the vacated day school area, be completed. The modest 1% increase in design capacity as a result of the renovation will help to delay the need for a new middle school by approximately one year. Also, in fiscal year 2022, or whenever the renovations of Ferry Farm Elementary are complete, we suggest moving the trailers from Ferry Farm to the Melchers Complex and/or North Star Complex because we anticipate there will be a developing capacity problem. In August of 2025, we recommend that High School Six open on a combined campus in the Hartwood District. Although this target is beyond the 100% desk cap, it is the earliest that school staff believes that a school can be open. In August of 2026, we recommend that Elementary School Eighteen open on the combined campus with High School Six. This target date aligns perfectly with the 92% desk cap goal. It also allows for the economies of the scale discussed earlier. Also, in August of 2026, we recommend repurposing the old Hartwood Elementary School to be Pre-K Center Number Three. This allows the Pre-K program to expand into the Hartwood District, which would help reduce the bus rides for many students and will allow the non-mandated Pre-K programs space to continue to grow as the county population continues to grow. Without additional space, those program enrollments must remain capped. We also anticipate that the new Pre-K Center Number Three will not need all the space at the old Hartwood Elementary, so phased renovations would be possible to meet emerging needs, or the building could be utilized in conjunction with High School Number Eighteen as an upper or lower elementary if enrollment warrants.
As the school board plans for growth, the question of rent availability becomes paramount. We would ask you to think outside the box and consider the formation of a land bank. Not only would having banked land decrease the build timeline by two years, it'll reserve these lands solely for school use in the future. As Stafford County grows in population and housing development, it is becoming increasingly important to secure lands which are topographically feasible for schools. Having a capability in place to generate revenue through the acquisition of the selling of land with the purpose of using generated funds to target preferable land is becoming a necessity. We investigated the possibility of two different land bank structures: a government commission, or 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The commission structure is sanctioned by and established by the school board. A commission's activities of buying, selling, and banking land is limited to Stafford County parcels. The nonprofit 501(c)(3) structure may be used in partnership with an existing nonprofit or through the creation of a new one. Nonprofits allow for less restrictive acquisitions of properties through purchasing and donations, not only within Stafford County, but around the Commonwealth of Virginia, the nation, and internationally. The University of Mary Washington has a successful model which we can model our land bank after. In a similar manner, a nonprofit would be able to facilitate land transactions purposed toward the end result of banking desirable properties for schools. There is even a potential for continuous revenue streams through the leasing of property or the sales of unneeded land. So that's the work that we have done this year on the Capital Improvement Plan Advisory Committee, and we hope that you have found our report informative and helpful. Thank you for your attention and consideration. We would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that excellent report. Now, I know I'm looking at Ms. Decatur, and I know you're concerned about the timing for the work session.
How did you know?
It's 6:26. We have four minutes. If you don't...
Do we... Yeah, we have another presentation.
Oh, my goodness. Why do we let you know?
Apologize for going over.
That's all right. This is important.
Did you all take over somebody else's time?
No, they're fine.
Well, let's not waste anymore.
Okay. I have a quick question, though.
All right. What I suggest is, is there any possibility that your committee may be available to meet with us at another date? Because I know I'm going to want to digest this information. I have some, you know, some additional thoughts on some of the proposals you have made here. I don't know if the rest of the board is interested. I mean, I'd love to be able to sit down with your committee to, you know, have a dialogue about this and...
Yes, ma'am. If it helps the county and our schools, where are all yours?
So if there is a very, very, very quick question, we can ask it. But otherwise, let's see. And we can ask our clerk to try to set a date because I think you've got, you know, you've done a lot of work here.
Let me ask the question before the time elapses. My question is really quick.
Ask your quick question. Good.
I would like time for every single committee to be able to meet with us after, you know, to digest the recommendations also. But I don't recall. So if we meet the next time, maybe you could have some data as to how you came up with that the high school number six should be in Hartwood. I didn't see it anywhere in the presentation.
Okay. We'll provide that for you. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll ask our clerk to try to get a time that works for y'all, understanding that the summertime is coming up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You've given us a lot to think about.
Thanks so much.
All right. Let's, uh... We'll have the second presentation. And my suggestion would be, depending on how long this presentation takes, we can reschedule the work session for after the meeting. We can have as much time as we, you know, have left today. But I want to give the, you know, the committee the opportunity to make their report since we did schedule it for today. But we can continue the work session after the meeting ends.
Wait, wait, wait. What time is the work session?
6:30.
I'm comfortable with whatever you guys need. I don't have any questions or concerns about the, you know, the work session and all of that. I think that was, you know, things that you guys wanted to discuss, so...
Okay. All right. Well, then, we'll move forward. I apologize for the delay, but we're ready to roll.
We're ready to roll. All right. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Erin Ewing. This is my third year on the Technology Advisory Committee. My second year as chair. I would like to speak with you guys this evening about some of the initiatives that we undertook over the last year, show you some of the products from some of the things that you guys approved, as well as provide several recommendations as we head into next year. A little bit of an overview. You guys know what these advisory committees do and are comprised of. For ours, we have a volunteer chair, myself. For ours, we have a volunteer chair, myself, and we have industry professionals, parents, students, county representatives, as well as the ITIS department here in the schools. We work in collaboration with school technology programs such as the VA STAR and the STAT Program. You'll see up here are five initiatives that we have been working on over the past year. The first of which is the Technology Strategic Plan. This was completed in January and is available on the website. We encourage all to familiarize yourselves with it and understand what this is. There are gaps that we believe that we can fill in other ways, and we'll communicate that further on in this presentation. This is truly a living document. It can be amended through feedback from parents, teachers, administrators throughout the year. So we look forward to that kind of collaboration and working on that artifact. The second is this software review process. We implemented the Educational Framework application. This is something that was used to, it's a third-party software that is used to evaluate software for student data privacy concerns. That activity was previously conducted using student interns, so this is faster, you know, more complete and electronic, and we can use their talents elsewhere. It has had great results. The third one is the Partnership with Learning and Organizational Development, which provided Chromebooks to all ninth-grade World History One classes. A little bit later in this presentation, you'll see an example from our World History One students. And for this, we are working towards actionable data to provide the impact that this has had on the learning environment within the class. That should be available more towards next year at this time when we're giving this presentation, so that you have more than just a, you know, ten-month period of data to draw from. So the fourth initiative is the Mobile Hot Spots. We use the Kajit systems in the Title I elementary schools. This was deemed advantageous yet underutilized. We believe that parents were reluctant to sign up for this system or device for fear of the liability of damage. That is, the policy is currently being rewritten to allow for the accidental damage for the first time to be eliminated out of that, you know, they're signing off for the first when they get the Kajit, to try and encourage participation because the individuals who are missing out from this is the students themselves not having the access, the very ones we are looking to encourage the use of technology at home where they don't have it. It was, it did show a lot of success within Hartwood Elementary. Other schools, again, we're looking for increased participation over the next year. We're also looking to roll that out to all public, all of our county schools, not just the Title I elementary schools, next year. The fifth initiative is that we added robotics as the new co-curricular supplement, and that is a word. I guess you guys are familiar with it. It was new to me. Basically, a stipend that was originally or historically provided just to our coaches and, you know, after-school staff, such as that, not individuals who are providing that mentorship in after-school clubs that robotics has done historically. This was one that was on the Virginia Department of Education's list as an added factor, and we are looking to increase that, and we'll talk to that in a little bit for next year, additional clubs. With that, I'm going to turn this over to, I would like to introduce you guys to Ms. Emma Devine. Emma is a rising senior at Brookpoint High School. She is our lead student representative with the Technology Advisory Committee. She is a member of STAT and STAR, and she is one of several paid interns within the department. And if she plays her cards right, she might be a hokey. So, here we go.
The other school.
Yeah. Thank you, Erin, and good evening. So I'm gonna start off by showing you guys an example of what these Chromebooks have been able to do in these World History One classrooms. So a really important thing that we're looking for when we, you know, implement this new technology is, you know, how is it being used? So I would like to kind of give you a brief demonstration of something that students have been able to do because they have access to this technology. So they have been able to create their own PowerPoint slides and systems to exemplify and showcase an ancient civilization. So as you can see here, they're able to create flow charts and graphic design in order to further demonstrate their point and the knowledge that they've obtained through this project. The use of Chromebooks in the classroom has truly provided students with a safe online learning environment for modern learners to discover safe resources online. So because it's in a protected domain through Stafford County, they're able to truly use these resources wisely in order to expand their education. The last point I'd like to make on this slideshow is that students are being taught digital citizenship when using these devices. As you can see through works and images cited, students are being taught to avoid plagiarism, how to properly cite resources, and how to further conduct appropriate research. Without further ado, I'm gonna move on to our major site topic visits from this year. The first one that I would like to discuss would be technology equity and access. And when we're talking about equity and access in terms of technology, I'm not just talking about Chromebooks. I'm talking about internet access as well, because a lot of Stafford County doesn't have the same broadband internet access as we do. So this is going back to the implementation usage of the Kajit systems, along with the expansion of the Chromebook program and other opportunities to gain internet access and physical technology access. The next point that I'd like to discuss would be blended learning. Blended learning is the implementation of technology alongside of education in order to enhance its abilities and capabilities with students. This is important for modern learners, and it's about using technology as a tool to truly enhance that learning. So I'm gonna show you another example of blended learning's applications. All right. So this is an example provided to us by an English teacher at Colonial Forge High School. Here, students are using the Google Docs application to peer-edit each other's papers. This is huge in workplace preparation and in preparing our Stafford County students to enter the workforce. Students are actively working with each other and collaborating to edit their papers, practicing not only critical analysis and thinking skills, but onsite grammatical editing and paper revision in order to extend their English capabilities as well. So as students become more comfortable with this, they'll be more available to use this in the workplace and as they further their studies. Another point would be enhanced professional development abilities. This is, how are we going to teach with technology? Not just teach technology to our students, our teachers, and our parents. And we have discussed with parents, and parents have reached out to us, to request training opportunities for the applications that we're implementing and utilizing in Stafford County public schools. If we teach them how to use programs such as Student View and maybe some Google Drive applications, they'll be more comfortable with helping their students at home access this stuff online. So if teachers are constantly posting to Google Classroom, parents might not necessarily know how to access these resources. So if we could give an overview to them on how to find these resources online, parent engagement would be therefore improved and lead to overall improvements with student performance. Digital portfolios are also huge and emerging in the technology industry right now, as well as the education industry. This allows students to showcase all of their work from an accumulation of one year to two years to as long as they would like, whether it's a specific subject, or it could be more than that. So without further ado, I'm going ahead and showcase a Colonial Forge art student and his AP art portfolio. So DJ's art portfolio is extremely impressive. As you can tell, he is kind of fascinated with dinosaurs. We thought this would be super fun to show you guys tonight. DJ creates beautiful online art, and he is able to upload it to this Google site that he can use through Google Sites and the Google domain abilities. So as DJ uploads these, this gives him potential to share with future employers, college admissions, or even just exporting it and sharing it with friends within the domain. So this is a great online tool, which is easy to access and accessible almost everywhere. So just to kind of show you some of his awesome artwork. Okay. Another item that I'd like to address would be the BYOD, or Bring Your Own Device, concerns. Many students bring their own devices to school, and an issue with this would be device disparity. So if you have a classroom of 25 students, and one brings a laptop, another brings a tablet, one has an iPhone, one has an Android, and some of them have nothing. So this disparity leads to struggles within the classroom when using this technology because teachers are brought down to the least common denominator when trying to implement classwork into the technology advisory abilities. Stafford County, if we can provide safe and secure online domains and learning environments within the classroom through, again, the use of Chromebooks and other items like that. The last point I'd like to discuss for major topics this year would be consistent communication channels. As parents have relayed to us that they're almost ambushed with numerous forms of communication, such as Student View, Remind 101, Synergy, Email, Classroom Dojo, Peachjar, and we have students at multiple schools, multiple grades, each teacher communicates a different way, each club communicates a different way. There's so many different channels of communication. So if we were to streamline that, communication would not only be smoother for students but for parents and teachers as well. Moving on, we have our confirmed tech site visits for next year. Schools are able to showcase and highlight the use of technology within their specific school. So when we visit, we typically have a presentation from the ITRT, the CT, and typically a couple of teacher representatives to showcase how they're using technology within their classroom. Our first meeting this year will be in the PDC, which is the Professional Development Complex, as an introductory meeting, and we highly encourage any students, parents, teachers, staff, and of course, school board to come and attend these meetings in order to kind of gain some more access and insight into the Technology Advisory Committee. We will be visiting Garrisonville Elementary in October, Drew Middle in December, Mountainview High in February, and Rock Hill Elementary in April, and we hope to see you there. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this presentation back over to Erin to give you our suggestions. Thank you.
So she's pretty awesome, isn't she? All right. So where does that leave us? It leaves us with recommendations to you guys for next year, right? The first recommendation is to create an instructionally-driven approach to digital transformation for the school division with considerations toward equity and access. That's a lot of words, but it means a lot. What we're looking here is to develop, or we're looking for you guys to help develop instructional goals in terms of mapping instructional goals to technology. We're looking to define student, help define student achievement targets towards increased performance on standardized tests, equity and access to instructional capabilities across the county schools, and collapse testing timing, adding instructional time back to the school year. The second recommendation is a follow-on from last year. This is one FTE for a supervisor of instructional technology. This recommendation comes from an Evergreen study back, I believe, in 2016, 2017 that called for the development of this position. What I'd like to bring to your attention now is that we went and we surveyed and pulled the data for your peer group of Virginia school divisions to determine where we are at, let me hold on one second. Determine where we are at in regards to our comparative market. If you can see from this graphic or this data point right here, you see that every one of the comparative school divisions has this position. They may pay differently, they may be in a different, whether they're in central office or not, may be different, they have different populations of students. That's all good and well, but the primary point here is that if we want to lead our students, we're not even on the map here. And as a parent and as a community member, not following this recommendation, I don't believe is doing due service to our children. The third recommendation we have for you is to expand the teacher-staff stipend for the after-hours technology clubs and organization. This goes back to that co-curricular money. What I'd like to bring to your attention right here is, we have a couple of clubs currently that operate and assist these students as they get ready for either, you know, the non-college track or the college track in terms of technology. One of those primary programs is the Virginia STAR Program, and one of their sponsors is here tonight. This is Mr. Timmerman with Brookpoint High School. He is the lead stat information technology teacher. He is the mentor to the Nerdvana event. He's the mentor to the STAT IT Student Council. He is a previous gaming club sponsor and the future esports sponsor. This individual has a commitment to the mission. He is leading by example for these students. I think it is imperative that we recognize those efforts after hours through a stipend, such as we give to our football coaches, our basketball coaches, and all of those. This goes hand-in-hand with CTE's recommendation for career and technical student organization activities. The fourth and final recommendation is kind of echoing what our student rep, Emma, asked for. We are asking for each of you guys to attend as many tech site visits as possible over the next school year. You'd be amazed at what you would glean from listening to the students, your staff members. These teachers are doing fantastic work with the students, and they showcase it to us. Normally, our meetings do not end at 7:30. They go until 8:15 or 8:30. I'm just telling you, yeah, okay, so no. They end very quickly, and they're very succinct, and no, they're excited. They prepare for it, they bring examples of what they're doing in the classroom, and they're grateful for the time. One of the primary ones was, as Emma was talking about, that BYOD. They are really able to articulate and share with us the challenges that they feel in the classroom as, you know, individuals are trying to keep up and trying to be part of the learning environment, but they can't, the teacher can't keep up with having to try and be that IT specialist for each individual's device. I could go down several rabbit holes, but I'm not gonna do that. That's where I'm gonna leave you guys, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions, Ms. Young?
I do have a quick comment, though. Emma should be, I wanted Emma to mention at least how she has been helping the elementary school kids in technology. If you wanted to take a minute to mention that, because I thought that was really, really important, what you all have done.
So I'm a member of the STAT Information Technology Program, which is hosted at Brookpoint High School, and this December, we did an hour of code activity with Stafford Elementary School, which is right down the road from Brookpoint, so pretty convenient transportation-wise. We had student representatives from the IT STAT program go over for an entire day, working with every single class on Chromebooks, to kind of showcase coding programs and kind of games that would get them engaged with, I guess, computer science in a pretty smaller form in order to expose them to it. Sorry. This was a great opportunity, not only to, I guess, get our little STAT nerds kind of out of their caves and working with students across the county, but to just showcase how far, I guess, STAT IT as a program has come, and the fact that we are able to do such community outreach now, when in years previous, it's been such a small, kind of, I don't know, glanced-over program. We want to show that we're growing. We want to show that we want to have a community impact, and this is a great outreach program, and we hope to do it for many years to come. So thank you very much for letting us have that opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
No, any comments? No?
Just one quick comment.
Ms. Hazard?
I know Ms. Young and I attended something in the fall, and we got a map of Stafford County, and it showed that we were abysmal, basically. We were in the worst category for access to internet outside of the schools, and I really think that's something we, as a school board and our Board of Supervisors, can combine some forces on because we can't lay cable, and I mean, I can speak to the Hartwood District. I know, I see the kids in the parking lots outside of the Howell Library. I mean, I know why they're there at night because they're trying to get access. So I just think that's something we can partner with, and I think a lot of what you all brought was interesting, but I think that's really something, because we have that map. I mean, it says really, really clearly, and I'm not even gonna ask what a Kajit is, so I'm just gonna show that I don't know what it is.
I just wanted to comment back on what you stated in terms of partnering. We did have the T- We did have the TCC and TAC partnering together. Hopefully, we continue to do that and with Cox and Verizon and some of those other telecommunications groups to ensure that the kids get access. So, this is where this come from. So, we did come far, but not far enough. So, the board does work with us, the Board of Supervisors does work with us, with the TCC and TAC coming together. So, we just need to continue that, so.
Thank you for that comprehensive report. Again, the board is gonna be, you know, looking at these reports, and I would be shocked if we didn't have any questions to follow. So, I'm sure we will be getting back with you, or perhaps have an opportunity to sit down with you as well, depending on your schedules. You know, I think that will give us some time to take a look at it and then put our questions and thoughts together as well. Does the board have any thoughts about sharing these reports with the Board of Supervisors? I know it's very early, but I think it would be good to share these and let them know what our committees are doing, the recommendations that are coming to us, and what we're gonna be looking at for the future. I think, you know, a lot of these do involve the supervisors and the community, and it is a partnership on, you know, what we're going to do. And this is a forward-thinking, you know, for the schools, and this is not the school board speaking. This is our community speaking. So, if there's no objection, I would ask that we have Dr. Kizner send them to Mr. Foley to share with the supervisors, Ms. Decatur.
My only thought on that, I think it's a great idea to share this. I would hesitate a little bit to share it before we do have an opportunity to have a work session where we can ask questions. I would certainly hate to get asked questions from my counterpart when I haven't had the opportunity yet because of, you know, lack of time and things of that nature. So, yes, I'd love to share them. I would love to have a work session where we can chat about them first.
Well, we could, my thought was that they are public at this point. They're gonna be on the website. And if we send them over, it would be with the understanding that this has just been presented to us. We're gonna be looking at it. We're gonna be sitting down with the committees. We're gonna be developing these ideas further. But just so we're not acting in a vacuum. But if it's the board's desire to wait, that's okay with me. They can always look at it on the website. But I think that this would show our desire to communicate, to work with the supervisors, because there's certainly things in here that we're not gonna be able to do as a school system. But together with the supervisors, you know, we can do these to make things better in the county. But it's up to the board.
Just a quick comment. Yeah, I find it great. Either way is good. But what I wanted to add also is that we have the recommendations from every group. In the past years, I know for a fact, because I've been on these committees, that we didn't do anything with them. So, I'm hearing that we're gonna have work sessions. We're gonna look at these recommendations, and we need to put them in our plans, in our strategic plans, in our budgets, and make sure that we follow through. Because these committees, like you said, the community, they're taking time out of their day to come to these meetings. They're presenting, and it's hard work. I mean, I've been to many of these, and you all have been to them also. But they take their time out of their day, so we need to take it serious, and that's all I have to say.
So, thoughts? Do we wanna send them over now, wait till later? I mean, the important thing is that we have a plan to move forward and work with the supervisors.
And we do have a plan. As you all remember, we have a committee recommendation-tracking worksheet that I requested years ago. It's in place, and that report is given to us, I think, at least at a minimum, once a year. Possibly, we probably should get it more than three times a year. I do agree with Ms. Decatur in that history has shown us that when we do send things over as a board, to the Board of Supervisors, that it sometimes is construed that we have adopted and we agree with all recommendations in the report, which we do not, which I do not. So, I did hear your words that you said, that we will make sure that it's...
Information.
Information.
But it's fine if you wanna wait. I was...
I would like to wait.
I don't necessarily disagree with the information given.
I don't.
I just, it's a recommendation to abandon certain things. It's a big recommendation. I think it's fabulous, to be quite honest with you, so far. But I just think that you're exactly right. If it is misconstrued that we are all supportive of this before we have a chance to really digest it, so.
Well, that would be part of the transmittal, but if it's the will of the board not to send it at this point, that's fine. It's available. It's on the website, and people can look at it, but it's, so we will not share. I'll share with my counterpart, Ms. Mauer. I see you out there. All right. So, that brings us to 6:55, and our meeting starts at 7:00. Clearly, we're not gonna have a five-minute work session. What is the will of the board? Do we want to just take the, when we get to the information items on the proposed revisions to the policy and the proposed new policy, to have the discussion at that time? That's, you know, one way we can, you know, go about it?
I think that would be fine.
Okay. All right. Well, then we will take the next four minutes to take a break. Come back at 7:00. Thank you.